Oh, no problem.
Okay.
Sorry, I was getting ready to tell you.
How about you?
He said to applaud this and pay it to you.
I'm sorry.
I don't share.
Good evening. Call to order the May 12th, 2025, meeting of the Warwick County Commissioners. Paul, would you like to send the budget, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start it with APC.
Okay. Our first item is a request for the extension of surety. It's Auburn Point, Section 3, Phase 3 by Chandler Real Estate. We're holding $35,640 for street construction. They've had three years and they're requesting one year at the same amount. This letter of credit expires June 3rd of 2025.
The term ends officially.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Motion carries three zero.
We have three requests for release of surety. The first one's a commercial drive, 22094, 11734 Industrial Park Drive by Industrial Park Holdings, holding $49,976.30, guaranteeing the entrance construction. They've had two years and it expires June 23rd of 25.
The drive has been constructed, recommend release of the surety.
Motion to release the surety.
I'll second this motion.
First and second on favor.
Aye.
Aye, carries three zero. Commercial drive C23015, 9765 Pointview Drive by Minimage 2 LLC, holding $11,407 in escrow. They've had one year and this letter expires June 14th of 25.
This drive's also been inspected and constructed per plan, recommend release of the surety.
Make a motion to release the surety?
Second.
First and second on favor.
Aye.
Aye, carries three zero. Commercial drive C23063 at 8922 High Point Drive. It's Insulterra Concepts LLC by Nate Mominy, member, holding $6,356.68 in escrow, guaranteeing the construction. And they have had one year. They did get a six-month extension that expires September 10th of 25.
They have made the requested corrections and I would recommend release of the surety.
Motion to release the surety.
Second the motion?
First and second on favor.
Aye.
Aye, carries three zero. Our last item's a primary plat, PP2503. It's called Tall Timbers by Birong Hoing, the owner, and Stephen Endeavour Gorman, approximately 5.708 acres on the north side of Van Road, approximately 200 feet east of Maple Lane and Van Road in Ohio Township, 2369. This is advertised in the standard, May 1st of 25. Complete legal is on file and they are requesting no improvements to Van Road.
I didn't know if you want to talk to anyone here, but it is, I would agree with no improvements. It's one lot. Basically, the remainder's going to adjacent property owner, so it's just one access point. Chad is here if he needs to speak to it.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. He's right, the back parcel is an acre and three quarters and that's going to the joiner to the north.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the street construction plans for PP2503.
I'll second the motion.
First and second on favor.
Aye.
Three zero, thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Andrew Skinner, living Newburgh, and I'm on the board for Warwick County Community Foundation. And I'm excited today to introduce to you Sean Georges, who is Vice President of Mission First Incorporated. Mission First is an organization dedicated to the improvement of this region's veteran care. Mission First focuses not only on the veteran, but also on the veteran's family. Mission First is there when the veteran comes home to his two-year-old son that he's never met, who doesn't recognize him and doesn't want anything to do with him. He's there to counsel that veteran, there to counsel the veteran's family, and there to help reunite that family and build a relationship together after time away. The resources that they provide our areas veterans, that they're going to be providing our areas veterans, are top-notch and first in the country. One of Mission First's big ideas, grandiose idea, was to create a first-of-its-kind sanctuary for veterans and their families to go to, to reconnect. And Mission First recognized that there was nothing like this. And so with that, Sanctuary on the Hill was birthed. And the concept was created with their team of directors. They found a home for this sanctuary right here in Warwick County, the northern part of Warwick County, 90 acres here in northern Warwick County. The lakes, the trees, the forests, the hills, just a perfect serenity for the veterans' families to come and enjoy time together as a family and reconnect and receive services that this veterans' community and this group can help connect them with. So with that, there is an expense associated with putting something this big together. And so that kind of came together serendipitously. And to talk a little bit about that expense and the funding that came up, I brought Jill Carpenter, who is the Director of the Community Foundation Alliance, which is a nine-county alliance of community foundations here in this region. And if she would come up and share a little bit about how this project came up and how she heard of it and how much funding we were able to receive for this group to kind of really get this off the ground moving here in Warwick County.
I'll go quick. I'm Jill Carpenter, I'm with Community Foundation Alliance. And the community foundations in the state of Indiana have a pretty special relationship with Lilly Endowment out of Indianapolis. And every so often, Lilly will come to us and say, hey, if you have some really great projects, we would like to hear about them. And so we knew we had this opportunity to submit a concept paper last April. And in March, we didn't really have anything big for a regional project. And I happened to serve on a board and this project was being talked about. My ears perked up because I'd not heard anything about this project. They've been very quiet about it because they wanted to get their ducks in a row before they went public. So I started doing some research. I had a relationship with a couple of people on that board, so I started reaching out. And within a week or so, we were in a room together. And in about a three-week time period, we were able to submit this concept paper. The concept paper was for the four-county region. So that's going to be Warwick, Vanderburg, Gibson, and Posey County. So we serve around 16,000 to 18,000 veterans in that region. And so we waited. And then in July, the endowment invited us to submit a full proposal. So we got to work again. We submitted that proposal in September, on September 30th. And the entire project is about an $8.5 million project and we asked Lilly for $6.7 million of that. They had already done some good fundraising already, so they had some funds already raised. So in December, we got word that it had been fully funded. We did, as an organization, submit another one up in Pike County. That's a $5 million trail, so we are excited to have received two very large grants from Lilly. But this project is in my backyard. I raise my kids here and I currently live in Vanderburg, but I raise my kids here in Warwick County. So I'm excited about this project. And I have Sean here, who's going to give you a little bit more information about the project. This project was going to make it regardless of this money, but we sure did put it on a fast track. So we should have this all built by the end of all phases, which there are three phases and he'll talk a little bit about those, by the end of 2027.
Wow, that's great.
Good afternoon, I'm Sean Georges. In a past life, I actually served as counsel for this body. And so it's good to be back in front of you. Vice President of the Board of Mission First. So Mission First is the nonprofit that we set up very quietly and earnestly. We were on mission. Most of the members of the Board are former military, as am I. Served in the Marine Corps from 1983 to 1996 and have since retired from Shoe Carnival. So spent most of my post-military life here in this community. Honored to be doing this right here. What you see, and I'm not sure if the Board can, the Commissioners, oh, okay. If you can see what we've got sort of scrolling through is you've got a visual artist's rendering on what this 90 acres of undeveloped land, right here in Warwick County, will look like. Pretty remarkable as far as the visual. More remarkable, I think, is really our mission. The mission is simple. To provide a sanctuary to strengthen and renew a sense of purpose for those with military service. And this includes, of course, their family, their children. We'll have a very brief video I'd like for you to watch of which kind of makes this come alive. One of the things you realize when you serve in the military, and I don't know if any of you have served, may have, any prior military members on the Board, when you leave, it's a stark change, jarring, I would put it. One of the things our government is very good at is recruiting, equipping, training, and deploying its military. Nobody does it better on the planet. The thing that I think we've fallen short in as a society is the reclaiming, the re-engaging with military members once they leave active-duty service. And the reason is because the government isn't failing. It was never the government's responsibility. And what we realize is that it has always been the community, with the community at large. So all assets, all resources, bringing military veterans and their families back into the fold so that they can continue service at the highest level. So that's the center and the heart of our mission. Why Warwick County? Why southwest Indiana? I would say this humbly. After having been all over the world, I think there is something unique about this part of the world. I think we have a heart here and I think we have resources. So this is going to be, this is the first time in our nation. This is a one-of-one right now. We hope, we think, that we can build a pattern for this to exist and be replicated across the United States. We're going to involve, we have letters of commitment from organizations across the four-county area, Vanderburg, Warwick, Gibson, and Posey. Not just letters of support, but actual conversations and commitments from these nonprofit organizations that are already, that have specific programs and specific goals themselves that will impact this. But just to give you a better sense of what of sort of the human element, we're going to try to play a brief video. Oh, good Lord, just locked you out of. I said I was a Marine, that means technologically challenged. Yes, you may, if the Board can walk, it looks like it's not. There we go, okay, are we ready?
My name's Paul Lindberg. I'm a Marine Raider with the United States Marine Corps. I served 10 tours overseas, including Iraq, Afghanistan, Philippines, various parts of Africa and Europe. The first time I deployed as a father, it was completely different. I remember sitting there and we were getting ready to go out and do an operation and it was the first time I really kind of analyzed my own mortality. We're always willing and ready and prepared to die for our country, but I never considered really having and needing a reason to live. It was like, man, you got to really, you got somebody that's relying on you to come home.
The military homecomings, when the people, the dad runs out on the football field or they get off the plane and everybody hugs them and it's great. Everything's great and then that's when the work starts. Like, it starts for us in that moment. And it's, it's hard. It's hard when they have to transition back to this stranger that you don't know. And you have to, it's like you have to date and get married all over again. And then your kids don't know their dad, they don't know who that is.
My son was five months old when I left. He wasn't walking when I, now he was walking. And I squatted down to hug him and he just looked at me and started crying and just walked away. That was like a knife in the heart, you know? It's like the one thing you think about what you want to do and then he did not want anything to do with me. Man, that's the worst. Right after I retired, I kind of had this, you know, fresh start, out of the Marine Corps. This is that kind of, you know, stuff is over. And then within two weeks, I had a very good friend of mine commit suicide. And it kind of brought it all back that, you know, you can leave, but it's not going to leave you. And I've got, I mean, I've got more friends that have committed suicide than have died in combat. And I've got a lot of friends who've died in combat. You know, you wake up every day and you have these things happening. You're starting on an anger threshold, say it's one to 10, you're starting at six, but it just feels normal to you. So when the slightest thing happens, you're going from six to 10 very fast, where normal people would go, you know, they'd probably bump up to a four. PTSD is not permanent. You're not broken, you're not damaged, you're not any of these stigmas that are associated with PTSD.
Our outlet has always been the outdoors. It's always been like when we needed a reset, that's been our way to really bond together. And since Mission First is the property, we've gone out there a couple of times and it's been awesome to see our kids get to like fish and trap and see animals. How healing that is for us to be able to do that together.
Having my children and my wife, I mean, that's the reason to get up every day, just to see them and be with them. Sorry for all the times that I've not been the best husband or father that I could have been, should have been. My new mission now is every day to make that better and be that dad and that husband that you all deserve. And that is a powerful driving momentum in me.
So those are real people. That's Paul Lindberg from Evansville, Indiana. Went to Memorial High School, spent 20-some years in the Marine Corps, much of it in places that we can't even talk about. But there's the coming back, there's the return. And what better place than here? I hope, we hope, to be good stewards of the property and this opportunity. We look forward to keeping you informed as we go forward. Clearly, the multimillion-dollar grant we received through the foundation and Eli Lilly is going to get us on a fast track. But the real work here is going to involve the talent and the resources of this greater community. From equine therapy, we just engaged with a group out of Princeton, Indiana. And it's going to be those kinds of things that are going to be, we think, remarkable. This, all of the programming will be evidence-based. We're not going to go out there pretending like we know what we are doing. We are here to lead the experts in making this happen. There are over 16,000 military veterans in just this four-county area. There are 197,000 south of I-70. This is just Indiana, not even talking about Illinois and Kentucky. So this has the potential, if we do it right, to be a game-changing, not a handout, place for handouts, a place to level up, get your feet on the ground, engage with local employers, the business community, resources throughout this four-county area, and do this right. And we're just honored and humbled. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. We hope you're proud of what we're about to do and we look forward to having you out on the property. By the way, that fish was an actual.
Not staged?
It wasn't.
I think this is amazing.
I just, I want to say thank you. I have a, my significant other is a Marine Corvette.
Hoorah.
Yeah. And everything that that gentleman said or the things that he said to me. And I think it's amazing.
Thank you, thank you. We hope to measure up, okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr. Kari, Health Officer for Warwick County Health Department. We just wanted to come give you a little bit of an update. We've been in our positions now for about three weeks and hit the ground running. Tomorrow, we have interviews set up for a permanent health administrator. So we're hopeful that the candidate we have coming in seems to be strong on paper, but we will see after the interview. We're moving forward with moving back here. We just got our estimate today about moving everything back over here and are working on surplusing what we have downstairs and kind of doing the juggle of moving everything around. So we have hopefully a plan on that and the plan is to start coming back the Tuesday after Memorial Day and then letting them have that whole week to kind of get themselves organized and their office and everything set up, how they want to have it set up. The other thing I just wanted to update on is a little bit of a measles update for the state and then Julie can kind of talk to you a little bit of the finances that she's dealt into. So so far, in the state of Indiana, our outbreak is contained to eight cases up in Allen County, Indiana. After two incubation periods, that's kind of the standard disease course, if you will, it's 21 days. And after two incubation periods, then that's when the State Department of Health can officially declare us clear of measles in the state of Indiana. And if so far, nobody, other cases turn up or anybody else with suspicious symptoms turns up, that would be on May the 28th, when we would be declared free of the measles outbreak here in Indiana. However, as of May 1st in the United States, we've had 935 cases with only three of those in individuals who were vaccinated. So I think that really highlights the importance of receiving our MMR, our measles, mumps, and rubella vaccination. So reminder, those who were born prior to 1957, you have immunity through getting the disease yourself as in your childhood. Everybody after 1957 should have at least one MMR, preferably two, to be fully vaccinated. So I was starting looking up what are our current numbers here in Warwick County of our vaccination rates. And as of December 2024, December 31st, 2024, the numbers that the State Department of Health published per CHIRP data, as far as MMR vaccination rates in children up to the age of three, we're currently only at 89%. When you look at children up to the age of 18, they're in the 94% range. So I think that kind of number disparity highlights the fact that we have a decreasing vaccination rate. Because the MMR vaccines, the first one is given between 12 to 15 months of age and then you get your second one, four to six years of age, typically before the child enters kindergarten. So unfortunately, our vaccine rate has decreased over the last several years, but something that I hope that we can work on and work out with outreach to schools, vaccine clinics to help raise our vaccination rate here in Warwick County.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Julie Shade, I'm the Contract Administrator for Warwick County. I just, diving into the finances, 2024, I'm working on some things with HFI funding with the state. We fixed some things with that. So I'll be doing the year-end financial report and submitting it this week. Then I will also be realigning the budget for HFI funding for 2025. So I'm working on that and I'll have to resubmit that and then go to council and we'll get that aligned to where we're doing more things in the public, partnerships and all that. As far as chronic disease, infectious disease, mental health, the sanctuary thing is a great idea because mental health is a huge thing and we're trying to combat that. We just went to the Community Needs Assessment last week at Ascension Health and we work together for Warwick County's members and stuff, so seeing what we need in the county to help. So that's where we're at and that's what we're going to do with that. I also have all the budgets for 2026 and I will be working on that as well, along with realigning the office and the staff to get everything to where it needs to be. The Administrator should be handling all the finances so you have it all together. So that's what I'm working on now, just so you guys have an update.
Thank you guys so much for your information and your hard work. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 28th, 2025 meeting.
How should they approve the minutes?
A second motion? First and second on favor. Aye, carries three zero. Any Administrator?
First thing on the consent agenda is the payroll voucher, payroll number nine. It should say 5725, not three on the agenda. It's in the amount of $682,089.45. The accounts payable voucher for May the 12th is $1,288,253.88. Do I keep the uncertified separate or just put it in there?
You're just listing the agenda item right now, so you can keep it in there.
Okay.
And if Commissioners want to pull it out.
All right. And then one non-certified claim in the amount of $916,020.
Wait, how much?
$916,20, full explanation.
It's $916,000.
I did?
Yeah.
Well, maybe that too, $916.20.
So you want a motion to approve the consent agenda first?
That is it, right? Both of those are the consent agenda. Unless you're going to take them separately.
Consent agenda.
Are the two things, the payroll vouchers?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. It's a little different. It's what I'm used to, so.
Yeah, there's not much there, really.
Yeah, that's the difference. So do we want to take these separate or together?
On, under B, item two, how do we fix uncertified? So that it is certified?
Well, the auditor can un-certify it and then the Commissioners can go ahead and certify it for payment or un-certify it.
The certification is just by the auditor. It's just whether it's complied with the policies and procedures that he or she believes should have been complied with. So in this case, they have not certified it, saying it has not complied with the policies and procedures. But the Commissioners' determination is separate and apart from that. So you still have the power to pay a non-certified claim.
Okay, well, I know it's already been paid, so.
Oh, has it?
It has been paid.
It was a credit card payment, so it's already been paid.
But that's where the problem lies, right?
Well, the problem is there was a few receipts that were not attached to the credit card. The credit card's already been paid, it's just with the claims that were turned. It's just with the claims that were turned in, there was a couple of receipts.
That's why the number is different because it was 195.
Yes, it was changed.
916.
Correct, and it's in your I updated it in your packet today.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Which is still just these two that were that was still filed.
So but part of that non-certified claim met?
Yes.
It was just those it was just those two receipts.
There was just a little bit of that claim.
Okay.
It's this part, I think, now?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one more thing to add to the agenda that was brought to me later this afternoon, and Bobby might be able to tell you a little bit more. I have a approval of a GPS module to track. The Highway Department has GPS modules to track all their county highway vehicles, and they recently received a vehicle from Stormwater, and it needs an additional GPS module. So we're doing an amendment to an earlier contract to add the GPS for this module, for this vehicle.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Sherry Severs, Warrant County Acquisitions Administrator. The first thing on my agenda tonight is the pest control contract. The last meeting, we opened bids for pest control, and I took them all and reviewed them. All of the seven required forms by all three companies were present and accurately completed. All three companies provided favorable references, which I've also included in your packets, each individual reference. And in your packets, on the, I think it's the third sheet over, there is a list of, I did an Excel spreadsheet. Here's a copy for you, Terry. Of how the companies came in price wise. And I've broken it down per location, and as you can see on there, that shows all the locations. However, the EMS stations in Lynnville, Boomville, and Chandler were not included because I really need to pull those contracts to determine what organization, if the county's responsible for that service, or if St. Mary's Ascension is responsible for that. If we are responsible, I can always include it into our contract. I have reviewed all three companies to confirm they have accounted for all the areas specified in the RFP. SWAT Pest, however, did not include Skels Lake Park Gatehouse or the Friedman Park Polebarn on their list. The RFP was mirrored off of the previous year's RFP specifying each location, but the specific wording that the pest control contractor would be responsible for garage areas, vending areas, common areas, et cetera. Per my request, Josh, from our maintenance, accompanied SWAT to these properties to assist him in getting into the main locations. However, the company is responsible for ensuring that all buildings, including garages, are included as per the RFP requirements. Recognizing these omissions, I did reach out to Brent Magruder with SWAT to discuss the oversight. Mr. Magruder took full responsibility of the oversight. He assured me that they would uphold their bid, standing firm on the bid price to include these areas as they are determined to do business with Warrant County. As stated in the RFP, the Warrant County Commissioners will consider price, quality, service qualifications, reputation, and any other factors relevant to deem appropriate. They will then select the quote that they feel will best serve the interest of Warrant County. At this time, I respectfully defer to the commissioners regarding their decision on selecting the bid award for Warrant County Pest Control.
I'm impressed that Phillip pulled the bid.
Yeah.
And add those two in. Says a lot about integrity.
Yeah.
So if we take the lowest bidder, that would be SWAT.
Sherry, can you explain the orange?
Yeah, so if you look on there, Terry, the orange, that's basically for Skels Lake. That included everything at Skels Lake with the exception of the Beech House. They just gave one overall quarterly price of $100. They the red is they left out Skels Lake Beach House, and they also left out the Polebarn at Friedman Park. But they came in significantly lower at $3,920 annually.
In looking forward, even if next year that they include those areas, they're still going to be well below the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, and they also recognize the opportunity. We're building a $54 million jail. That's another opportunity for possibly new animal shelter and other things in the future. So they do recognize that.
I'm going with that. Entertained a motion? Yes, I'll make a motion to approve SWAT. Second. First and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item on my agenda is declaration of surplus items for the Highway Department. I have attached a surplus sheet along with pictures for you to review. Carl Dant has completed the Exhibit A, which lists everything that needs to be on surplus. He gives you the approximate value. He has asked that we put these on govdeals.com, and I kindly request the commissioners to declare the surplus of the miscellaneous tires and wipers.
I can motion to declare the Highway Department's inventory surplus.
A second motion? First and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item on my agenda is declaration of surplus items, Highway Department equipment. I would like to respectfully submit a request from the Highway Department regarding equipment inventory. With the recent acquisition of the new brush chipper, the Highway Department has proposed declaring the old 1993 brush bandit chipper surplus. They also wish to declare the 1982 cat wheel loader surplus, listing both of these pieces of equipment for sale on GovDeals auction site could be beneficial to move toward optimizing their resources. I have included Exhibit A, which is the surplus sheet that Carl Dant has completed. I kindly ask commissioners to consider this request to declare the following equipment surplus. 1993 brush bandit chipper, last four on the VIN 2229. 1982 cat wheel loader, last four on the VIN 0476.
I'll make the motion to declare those items surplus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item on my agenda is declaration of surplus for some desks that are currently in the Health Department. The Health Department will be moving back to the lower level. And currently, in the nurse's office, we have four L-shaped desk and then just one regular desk. I have attached Exhibit A, which contains a surplus sheet supporting with photographs for your review once these desks are declared surplus. I'm not so sure. I'd have to I have to defer to legal counsel if we can reach out to Habitat for Humanity as a donation or not.
Can't remember off the top of my head.
I was thinking we had maybe a no on that last time, but I couldn't remember.
Can they just come and take them? I mean.
I don't know if we can or not. I couldn't find everything. Debbie, we had talked about that before.
Once before, we were going to donate computers, and we legal said that we shouldn't be donating, but didn't mean, I mean, in my opinion, they could just come and give them.
That's what I'm saying, like, if we don't reach out to them and say we would like to donate these, but yet they're open to the public for anybody who wants.
Or we have to dispose of them. Yeah, so we have two of them spoken for. So we'll have two L-shaped desks and one regular desk, so really pretty solid sturdy desk.
I'll make a motion to declare them surplus, and that'll get us that far forward.
Okay.
A second motion?
And then.
And maybe to give the discretion to the purchasing agent on how to dispose of them, and then we can discuss that.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to give Sherry the discretion to do what she may.
Can you agree with the amendment? Okay, so we have a first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. And clip, I'll reach out to legal on that, get to that point. The next thing on my agenda is proposal for Judge Granger's office build out project. As you all know, we have put this project out twice for bid, received no bids, therefore, according to statute, we were able to pursue contractors in the open market. And before you today, I'm pleased to present a bid from Brandon Farrenbacher. He is the Superintendent of Maddox Industrial Contracting. This project is bid as a turnkey with the exception of the code base to ensure cohesive appearance. I recommend that we match the new code base to the one we recently installed with the carpet replacement in 2023. We can provide that through our flooring contractor. We're looking at $130 for the code base and the code base adhesive. In the beginning of this process, Judge Granger suggested the commissioners contribute 50% of the cost while he manages the remaining 50% from the court's budget. I have a constructive conversation with County Administrator Debbie Bennett Steersman regarding potential funding options for the commissioners portion. She indicated that the only option available would be the interest from ARPA funds. Enclosed in your packets is the quote for Judge Granger's office build out project for Maddox Industrial Contractor, giving us two options. Option one, $30,760, and that's using the standard door that matches the existing office. We initially wanted a door that had a blind on the inside instead of the outside, but that particular door does not come with a blind on the inside. So he gave us another option, which is just a half glass. And I did send an email to Judge Granger and to Brandy over in his office recommending the option one so that everything measures and they can get blinds. The other doors have blinds adhered to them, but everything would match up much nicer. The price we have got is for 30 days. I would like to respectfully propose that the commissioners vote to approve the $30,760 build out project for Judge Granger's office. The funding for this project would be shared equally with $15,380, which is a 50% allocated split from the commissioners budget using ARPA funds and the remaining $15,380 drawn from Judge Granger's budget.
Make the motion to approve the project as recommended by Sherry.
A second motion? First and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks for staying on top of that one. That one took a while.
That was a long process. Next thing on my agenda is BNG. When they had came out and replaced all of our filters, and they've got that done successfully, everything seems to be running nicely now. BNG did report finding a few things to repair, but most of the issues to be replaced seem to be appeared to be related to lack of maintenance. BNG has proposed the installation of access ports and cleanout connections for all drain lines in the ceilings of the HVAC units. This process involves removing the rigid pipe from each unit and installing the access port, which will provide full access to drain the lines. The improvement will facilitate easy cleaning and servicing. It will enable our maintenance team to efficiently efficiently address any issues with the drain lines while on site and will allow for quick access in case they need to enclog a drain line. The service breaks down, it kind of just gives you the process. They cut the drain line, they install the quick access cleanout port, and this price also includes cleanup materials and labor. Total invested is $1,264. Your bids are attached. I kindly ask commissioners if they wish to proceed on the BNG scope of work for quick access cleanout points in the amount of $1,264. And this is in the JC only.
Has Brad chimed in on this?
I don't think so.
I with the remember, I don't remember when we did that, Sherry.
We just finished it up probably three weeks ago.
Hang on, hang on. So I'm talking about the system that we put in, the three I engineering design that was put in to stop, you know, when we've had the leaks in the Recorders Office, for example, we put in a system to mitigate that, basically shut off valves. I'm not I'm not clear on where the drain lines are in that system, but I wouldn't want to do anything installing more plumbing that would harm the system that I think we spent $80,000 to put in.
Okay.
I would just like for Brad to chime in in relation to that project.
Okay, I can reach out to Brad and report it at the next meeting if the commissioners are in agreement.
I'm not a plumber. I'm not sure I understand exactly where all that stuff sits inside the system.
Okay, so I'll get you more detail on that.
Well, I have a question. So the the shut off valves were for not for the drain lines, they were for the water, they were for the inlines, right?
Yeah, but I just, and that's what I'm saying, I don't know how that's all connected.
But that would be two different lines. One would be.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe this is for the condensation line from when the AC is on, the condensation drain line.
Okay.
But but I'm just guessing on that.
You're talking about plumbing lines?
Yes.
So it's a different line?
My understanding is is what they're giving us a bid on is for the condensation line on.
For the HVAC system.
On the HVAC system.
Not plumbing.
Right, so when the AC is running, you have condensation.
What I'm referring to was the HVAC system.
What is the shut off valve for?
It's within the within the closed loop system of the HVAC air conditioning system. I think you're probably correct, is, you know, you water in and water out.
Right.
But I would just like Brad to chime in to be safe because we've had way too many, way too many leaks in that building.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioners, I want to think about where they're going to pay for that from as well.
We'll table that for now, then.
So would you like to table that then until the next meeting? Okay.
I'd be okay with approving it.
Contingent.
With the final check box of checking with maintenance staff to make sure no problems. So if everybody's okay with that, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, for sure. I'll second it. Okay, so first and second all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. And then my last item is while BNG was here servicing and installing new filters and such, they also came up with a proposal that would allow them to service maintain and change filters biannually. They believe this will help eliminate some of the nuisance issues that we have been experiencing. I've attached a detailed breakdown of the services they have proposed. These prices are with Warrant County providing the filters. The prices are as follows. Spring service, $2,940, and fall service, $2,940. We'd like to ask the commissioners if they want to move forward with BNG's work to plan a biannual HVAC maintenance service, which costs $2,940 every six months for an annual amount of $5,880.
And were these the filters that we talked about that maintenance could not reach?
Yes.
And this is are these the services that previously were provided by Trane, and then we stopped that or did not renew their contract?
Yeah, we haven't had service for quite some time now, so yes. And I think with Trane, the only thing is they would not be able to do the water cooler or the boiler system because they can't work on that.
Because that involves a patent, and there's like two companies that can work on that.
But our services from the other company, I think, were around 30, 32,000 annually.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion. Do we have money for this? It's the same principles the other one prior?
Debbie?
So we have money in the courthouse project that we would just have to, we don't particularly have a maintenance line item, but we could, is this going to be contractual or what? Is this going to be a contract or what?
It's a service contract.
Probably in the contracts in another courthouse.
I feel like it's needed.
Right?
Yeah. To make it work. So I'll make a motion.
I'll second motion.
So we have first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Sherry. Warrant County Economic Development.
Good evening, Steve Rowley, Economic Development. I just have an sewer encroachment agreement for you guys to approve and sign. There is an encroachment agreement that has been. There is an encroachment agreement that has been reviewed. The Redevelopment Commission is doing infrastructure improvements on the lot directly north of the orthopedic hospital at the intersection of Eppworth and Van to facilitate future development that is coming there. It includes road improvements, around about an eight-foot pathway along with stormwater and some utility improvements. An encroachment agreement is because there is existing infrastructure, utility infrastructure in place. That's the town of Newburgh, has a twenty-one inch and an eight-inch sewer line. And when you want to develop and the sewer line already exists, you need an encroachment agreement. It protects the utility and allows us to do what we want to do. That agreement's been looked at by Bobby. It's been reviewed by Aaron. The Redevelopment Commission's attorney, Herb Davis, has looked at it. It's been signed already by the Redevelopment Commission. The town of Newburgh is just awaiting signature from the commissioners. And Debbie has the original in her possession for signing tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have nothing.
Make a motion to approve the encroachment agreement.
Can I second the motion? First and second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, easy peasy. Thank you.
Highway engineer?
Yes, thank you. I have, I think, well, two items and I'm going to punt the third one over to Cliff. But the, on Warwick Bridge 148, Steve, it's the station road, I have two change orders. Change order one and two. Change order one is for thirty-four hundred, ninety-two dollars and eighty-one cents. And change order number two is for thirty-seven hundred, sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Both of these are due to the condition of the beams once they were. It was hidden by the deck of the concrete, so we needed to fortify some of the beams just to hold the weight of the concrete and have a safe structure. So I'd recommend approval of both of those changes.
Make a motion to approve both change orders.
I second the motion. First and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second item I have.
Sorry.
Debbie, do you have a copy of that resolution? That's resolution number twenty twenty-five. Dash nine. Dash three. To do with traffic safety measures for Trailwood Drive and Oak Grove Intersection. The homeowners association in Old Hickory has asked for a section of the roadway of Trailwood Drive to be declared no parking. So that resolution will, will accomplish that and then we'll put in the proper signage. If approved.
I have issues with this. I have an issue with signing up to you.
Do you want to read the?
Yeah.
Resolution by title? Do we have to do that?
We just use it by title.
Okay. And I didn't hear what resolution number she said.
Three.
Three, okay. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash three. A resolution of Warwick County, Indiana, by and through its Board of Commissioners, authorizing the county engineer to install traffic safety measures in the Trailwood Drive at Oak Grove Intersection area.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five dash three.
I'll second the motion. We have a first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries three zero.
Thank you. The last item I have, like I said, will go to the attorney.
The item I have is a First Amendment to the Legal Services Agreement with Fine and Hatt Field. They are handling one matter for the county currently based on a conflict of interest. There is now a second matter, or it could turn into matters involving SIGCO, which is now, which was, it's now CenterPoint. And so they are going to handle those matters again due to a conflict of interest with my firm. And so I recommend, so the only changes to their current legal services agreement is the scope of work to expand it to include matters involving CenterPoint. So I recommend that it be approved.
Make a motion to approve the First Amendment to Legal Services Agreement.
I'll second the motion. Is it okay?
Yes.
No? Okay. So we have a first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries three zero.
We have omitted the sheriff from the agenda if they have anything.
Did you say you have nothing?
I have nothing. Okay, gotcha.
Comments from the public?
We have no one on the side in chief.
Awesome.
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion. First and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.